Okay, I'm going to call the Committee of the Whole Meeting for February 4th. Please rise for invocation with our mayor and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Once again, we are gathered for one purpose and gathered in unity for that purpose to conduct the business of this borough with equity, with justice, in the spirit of the common good, that things will not always work out for the pleasure of everyone's purview, but that they will work out for the better of all of Pottstown. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every justice of our office.
Okay, before we go into the Subcommittee Reports, we're going to have the presentation by the Independence Day Homecoming Queen Committee. So I guess Mark, you, myself, and Sharon.
Very good. Good evening. President Trani, Mayor Valentine Thomas, Council members, Borough Manager Flanders, press, and members of the community. I'm Marshall Levin Good. I'm the co-chair of the Independence Day Limited to the Fourth of July Homecoming Queen Contest. Tonight, we have three of our area homecoming queens that would like to present a proclamation from their respective Board of School Directors recognizing the borough Pottstown on the 200th anniversary of being incorporated in the state of Pennsylvania. The first homecoming queen I'd like to introduce to you is Sam Garantino, and she's representing, she's from Owen J. Roberts House. Sam? And we'll have to give it to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
And then we have the Wendy Lee is the homecoming queen from Pottstown High School.
Just want to say, Pottstown is my alma mater, so appropriate the presentation.
And then we have from Pottstown High School, Eliana Alora Duck.
Mr. Flanders has informed me that Owen J. Roberts is his alma mater and Sharon is the alma mater of Pottstown. That worked out quite well. Okay, now we will start on the Subcommittee Reports. Infrastructure, Counselor Culp.
Our minutes are on your iPad.
Any questions? Okay, next is Economic Development and Business. Erica, anything you want to update us on?
Just an update on our project for keep. We have received our three proposals for that. We're reviewing them now for installing services. Obviously, I'm happy to be proud of our additional review. We'll gather the oversight committee and decide what we're doing moving forward. Additionally, Momentum, our winter issue has been published, so I will be sending out email alerts. It will be on social media, so we'll get everyone a copy and please share that good news. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Transportation, Counselor Culp, anything?
Oh, I thought that was transportation, no?
No.
Well, we have a meeting, we have a meeting in March.
Okay. Cricket Center, Counselor Kirkland.
Do you report?
Okay. Pottstown School Board, Mr. Williams.
So, good evening, everybody. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for your participation in last week's joint meeting. I thought we started an incredible discussion on the issues that impact our property owners, in particular with education funding. It was the beginning of a discussion, and I just, hopefully, I can encourage our property owners, our commercial merchants, to continue this discussion, and I'll be bringing information as I can about the need for an equitable educational funding plan in the state of Pennsylvania. It impacts all of us. It impacts where we look at when we begin to talk about taxes, and I just really appreciate the reception that we've received, and moving forward, I think it's going to be, you know, as long as we can let our legislators understand that this is important to us as a community, that our children are important to us, you know, I think we can do great things. May not be the, we may not get everything, but I think we can do some great things. Just minor reminder that, minor reminder, our students have been busily working on the production of Grease, and that'll be happening the end of this month, I think it's March or February 27th, and $10 a ticket, you just can't go wrong, so we hope to see you out there.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Williams? Okay, the ad hoc zoning and animal, I will turn that over to Counselor Miller.
Animal, I believe the committee has come to agreement on some changes in our ordinances, and I'll send all the detailed information out for all the committee members, and then once they confirm that we're all in agreement, we'll be ready to present to the district justices for input. Our next meeting is Wednesday, February 25th, and Sergeant Rathkev was able to get us a scheduled meeting with the Chief Operating Officer of the Humane Society for Berks County for a tour and see if and how we can partner together with foster adoption and spay neuter programs. Zoning, we've just about wrapped up our final parking change discussions, and should be ready to bring forth those changes before council next month, and we're still working on home-based businesses, and that's also near completion. We meet again on the third Tuesday in February.
Thank you. Any questions? Vicentennial Committee, Counselor Culp.
Well, that's moving along pretty well. Things are coming together nicely. We have quite a few events planned. Our next meeting will be on February 17th, and hopefully, we can get some more accomplished and come out with a, with a good report.
One bit of housekeeping, number 11 is being scratched for tonight, so take that off. Okay, our first presentation is Higher Ground International, 1128 South Street.
Good evening. My name is Anetta Ford. I'm the attorney for Higher Ground Church International. With us tonight is Pastor Stephen Martin and Awenda Atienopolo. She's helping us with our PowerPoint presentation. Our purpose of coming tonight is to answer any questions that the council may have about our zoning variance request. That's pending before the zoning board. Higher Ground is seeking to change the definition of a boarding home, to change the dimension requirements for two rooms in the rectory and nine rooms in the comment, and to be able to accommodate more than six guests. Tonight, we'd like to help you understand the plans of our variance and the purpose for our variance, and also to answer any questions that you have about this request that's pending. Pastor Stephen's going to talk about who we are as a church and where we're going, where we'd like to go if we're given approvals for our request. Pastor Stephen?
I just want to say thank you for allowing us to come, mayor and council president, all the council members, and also Borough Manager. Thank you for meeting us before. Higher Ground Church, we're a church that's been in existence for over 12 years. We're currently in Conshohocken. Will be branching out with a second location here in Pottstown, expanding to the Pottstown area. We bought the old St. Peter's Church property over there on South Street. Our church is a community-minded church. We have a reputation of doing a lot of things for the community. So far, here in Pottstown, we've already had a coke giveaway, toy giveaway, and now this next form of ministry that we're seeking to do, if we get the approval, is this housing project with some of the buildings that are on our campus over there at St. Peter's. We understand that, once, once again, we apologize that the rumor mill started before we were able to come before you, but we felt like it was kind of pointless to talk about something until we went to settlement. We just went to settlement about 12 days ago, and then we had a community meeting last night and met with the neighbors, and we felt like that went pretty well, and we were able to answer all their questions, and it seems like we were able to appease most of the concerns that they brought before us. We're proposing to do, take the convent and the rectory that's on the property and do housing with that specifically for veterans and possibly probably some of our church members who are in need. It would not be a homeless shelter. It wouldn't be a transient facility, and in addition to that, it wouldn't be a voucher program type of facility. So basically, we're looking to, to just give back to them and do that form of ministry with them. I can answer more of that once we get to the question portion of that. Essentially, we're looking for the best tenants possible. Even last night, at last night's meeting, we were able to be in the, hear some of the concerns of the community, and it sounded like, to me, the community had the very same concerns that we have, from the standpoint of who would be living there, how would you, how would you keep, I guess, unwanted types of people from being there? And we're able to, we're able to choose whoever we desire to come in, and what we tried to convey to the community, and we would also like to convey to you, is that the people that we allow to live into those facilities, they're going to be the church's neighbors also. And so while the community doesn't want anyone loitering, we don't want anybody loitering also. While the community doesn't want anyone being a problem, we don't want anyone to be a problem also. While it would hurt the community, it would also hurt our brand also, and so I think that's what they were able to see from us last night, that we have a vested interest. We're not just dropping a, if you want to call it a boarding home, and then we're leaving. One of the things also I would like to state is also, we're just doing that with just two of the buildings on the property. We are actually starting a church there, and the church should be opening the second Sunday in March. So we're vested in being there, and so whatever happens there impacts us also. So I think I'll open up for questions. I mean, I think most people are familiar, if you read the paper, with the project, so if there's any questions I can answer concerning it, I would like to do that.
I have a question. In your opening statement from your attorney, you said you're seeking to change the definition of boarding homes. Do you mean from the perspective of the statutory definition? Because isn't it a state regulation of how a boarding home is operated and set up?
We were, basically, from my understanding, how this is to us is that, number one, a boarding home is allowed, first of all, we would have never called it a boarding home. Only reason it was called a boarding home is that was the box we were supposed to check on the zoning application. Number two, it's allowed in this, in this district ward of this area, but it needs special exception or special permission. The reason I say that is, and even doing our research on the property, we're not doing much different than what was already done on that property before. The St. Peter's Church that was there, the one convent was used for the sisters, nuns. Seven or eight would live there while they teach in the church, or in the teaching in the church school, and then the rectory was used for the male priests. Same type of scenario. Now, we're talking about for our staff and for veterans, but it was almost like, I guess, that kind of use almost kind of flew under the radar for years, but now, when we came into the picture, we wanted, we came to the license and inspection and just asked them, this is what we desire to do, how do you see this? And they told us it's classified as a boarding home. So, so the second part of that is, in changing that definition, it says that a boarding home has certain criteria. There were two criterias that we didn't meet. Criteria number one was that a boarding home could have no more than six occupants. When we looked at the rectory, and when we, rectory, we were able to house nine, so we were asking, can we house nine? And when we looked at the convent, I believe we were able to house 12, so we asked, could we, can we house 12 with that permission? The second definition of a boarding home we were looking to change was that the minimum room size for a boarding home was 150 square feet. Well, the way that the convent was built, I have seven rooms that are about 142 square feet, and so we weren't interested in doing any construction. We were asking, can we use the rooms as they were, given the fact they were eight square feet smaller than the boarding home definition? So that's what, that's the only two things that we were looking to change, and the way you change that is through a variance, from my understanding.
So these are common bathroom, shower?
Yes. Yes, in the convent, there are currently five full bathrooms. However, in the bedrooms in the convent, the way they built them in that day, each room had their own sink. That's just how they built them. In the rectory, there are four full bathrooms. So yes, yes, there are shared bathrooms, shared showering, but then private rooms.
And just to, this is not the same caliber of project as housing visions. It's kind of an apples and oranges type of thing, but this is very, much smaller than the minimum dimensions that you're talking about with the ordinance change for rentals. Am I correct? Wasn't that 170 or something like that?
Yeah, it was actually less than that.
It was less than?
Yeah, it was 70 square feet plus an additional, so many for additional occupants.
Oh, it was 70?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So these are actually different?
Well, just so we're clear, you're not making any of the rooms smaller. These are existing rooms of the size that are there now.
Absolutely, yes. They're existing rooms, and our biggest thing, I mean, I wasn't trying to do any construction. I mean, if it, if it went that way, then we would have to do that, but, yeah, they're existing rooms.
I'm also looking at a letter here that was sent by the Joint Veterans Council, which you met with, and they seem to have a little bit of lack of clarity on that this isn't going to be housing for homeless veterans, but it's going to be housing for veterans that can afford to pay the rate?
Correct. I wasn't unable to attend that meeting. My son was sick that day, but I had some representatives go, and from my understanding, they, they were under the impression that we were providing a homeless shelter, and so we had to be very clear with them that, no, this is not a homeless shelter. You won't be able to just walk up and say, I need a place to stay that night. You have to go to the Veterans Administration. Our name is just one, one place on the list. Once you go through their process, you get approved, and then you can make an application to us if you decide, if you think our facility is worthy to stay in, and make applications to us, and we do our background checks. And then we told Borough Manager that our intention is to seek one-year leases, because we didn't want a transient facility where we had different people every 30 days and things of that nature. So we have a little bit different standard. So I think with the Veterans Joint Council, again, I wasn't there, but my understanding was that they appreciated the fact that we wanted to help veterans. They probably want us to help veterans even more, to the point where we can help all veterans, and we're not in a position to solve all the problems. We have one unique problem that we feel like we can solve, and we're comfortable with that, and we're not going to be, I guess, pressured into solving everyone's problem.
Well, that's wise. But I just, I'm just knowing how homeless shelters work and just the fine nuances of when you're receiving people for this type of housing, and this will not have any children? There will not be any children?
No children, no married couples, and if the need arises for females and males separately, we will keep them in separate units.
But not in?
Separate housing, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So we have two, we have two facilities. If the need arose, then there'll be a women's facility, men's facility.
And just to clarify that it wouldn't be homeless, I think you said that you're aware of how homeless shelters type work, but this would not be that?
Correct. Right. It would not be that in theory, but because of the type of person who's seeking this type of boarding typically, and I'm not saying it as a stereotype, I'm saying it as a social norm of what really happens real time on the ground, and so that's why I'm asking. But I would suggest, Pastor Martin, that you make it a point to meet with the JES, you know, the Joint Veterans Council, because they are opposed, and especially when you're talking about veterans, it's a very sensitive and dear issue in this town. There are a lot of, there are a lot of credences given at different times to make sure that the appropriate honor is given. So I think that that's something that I would just suggest when we have.
Is it possible for us to get a copy of the letter that you were referring to? We haven't seen it.
Sure.
I mean, not right now, but we haven't seen it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're a nonprofit organization, and the housing units will be rent, charged rent?
Yes.
So it'll be for profit, those?
We're still nonprofit. I mean, there's things that we do as a ministry, it falls under our ministry, the same way when we have a summer camp, the kids pay to come to camp, the same way when, if we were to open a daycare, kids would pay to go to a daycare. All that, all that for us and our 501(c)(3) falls under ministry.
I don't know how that would work.
Do you have a community development corporation as a separate umbrella for these type of projects?
We do have other organizations, but in our past and in our, in our history, everything has fallen under our church's nonprofit, everything that we've done, whether, whether there is a fee attached to it or not, if you want to call it a fee. By no means, probably about what they're paying is a would pay, would just basically cover lights, utility, rent, you know, all the things that keeps that facility running.
Mr. Trani, just like any other use, right now, I understand the entire property is tax exempt by virtue of the prior church use. Unless the property is determined to be subject to real estate tax, or your operation is not viewed as, you know, a public purpose, then it could become taxable. But certainly, the church is going to be tax exempt. Without knowing more information, I suspect that that use would also be real estate tax exempt as it is now. But that's not council's decision, that's Montgomery County Board of Assessment. No, it's just a question I had, since before, when it was a rectory and for the police, I mean, naturally, they weren't receiving any monies, or they weren't paying any monies to the church to stay there. That's just part of their stipend that they were getting.
Yeah, I think it's how you look at it. I mean, it's basically part of their housing allowance, so instead of them making probably more cash value, they had a chance to stay somewhere, and so to me, it's the same.
Well, the individuals, though, won't be, I mean, they won't be ministers in your church, though.
No, but, but some of our staff, if it's approved, some of our staff probably would stay there also. We talked about that earlier.
Okay.
Would they be staying there as supervisors of the, of the, of the housing?
I think first and foremost, I mean, it would be part of their salary package, you know what I mean? Then number two, we talked about having a property manager who's available, and also has an onsite office, so she's, they're available 24 hours a day. Our staff will be onsite nine to three on a daily basis. Then we talked about, I think we talked with the Borough Manager about the possibility of having an onsite live-in. Again, we would have to find that right person, because I would want somebody that would be on my staff that would do that, in addition to our property manager. We talked about several things. We had, I felt like we had a good meeting with Mr. Flanders, and we also talked about putting surveillance systems on, we were already going to put surveillance systems on our property. That's just what we do as a church, but he made the notion of the, possibly making that available to the Borough Police, and we have no problems with that. When we mentioned that last night, to me, it seemed to give some of the community members rest, to know that we surveil it 24 hours and that the police would have, I guess, access to that, to that footage and...
Other questions?
So out of 21 rooms, do you have a set amount that you plan to set aside for veterans?
If it's up to us, it'll be all of them. Like I said, then, then the secondary is our, if there's a staff person or if there's a church member, that will fall into that category. But going into the project, you know, like I said, our notation is primarily veterans. That's what we're trying to do going into the project. Every once in a while, that comes up with staff. So, hopefully I answered your questions, so.
How many folks turned out for your meeting last night?
Newspaper reported about 20, but I think, I'm at 15.
And how did you advertise that meeting?
We went door to door with these flyers, and we can give you guys copies of these also. We went door to door in the block of South Street that we're currently in. From my understanding, I felt like we were doing the same. We called the license and inspection and asked them, how did they send out their notices concerning the zoning hearing board? And they said within 300 feet of the property, so we took that information, and that's what we felt like was 300 feet, and we went door to door.
Can you give me a rundown of what your screening process will be for your tenants? Including if you know what the VA's screening is?
Well, the VA, they go through the VA process, and I think with the VA, this is some of the concerns of the neighbors. I guess the VA 100% vets that they are veterans, that's the first thing, and then they go through their process. Once they're approved by them, again, our name is on a list of facilities they can choose from, and then they will come to us, and we would treat them like any other tenant, if you want to use that language, the application process and things of that nature. Last night, we talked about some other things that we could possibly do. Now, again, we don't necessarily know if they're legal when it comes to housing, the housing arena, but we, obviously, we would check all pedophile lists, things of that nature, because we, again, what we try to convey to the community, while you don't want a pedophile, we're not going to set the pedophile either. If we have a summer camp there, we can afford that. We have children's ministries. I have young children, so we're not going to do that either. So up to the point where we can stay legal, we'll do that. In addition, we'll have those provisions on lease that if there are issues, and we gave them our phone numbers last night and everything, if there are issues and issues don't get resolved, our lease would allow us to terminate, early termination clause in those leases. So we would, we feel like we can do everything that we can possibly do, and then, again, we would do that, again, for them, but also we would do it for ourselves.
And you said your, your intent would be to seek one-year leases, so what's the lease arrangement? Is it, is it between you as the landlord and the individual tenant? It's not with the VA for the vets?
No, correct. Yeah, it's between the individual tenant, however, you know, their funds are probably coming from, from or through.
And that, do you know how that works? Would the VA pay directly to you, or would the VA give an allotment to the tenant who would then turn it over to you as just a regular lease payment?
I don't, I don't have the answer to that at the moment.
Right, we, we don't have the answer.
Okay. And you touched on it slightly, you mentioned about staff living there, but if you didn't have enough of a pool of veterans who were interested, how would you fill the remaining rooms?
Well, again, I mean, we wouldn't, I would not bring a homeless shelter in. I wouldn't bring the voucher program in. If the room has to stay empty, it has to stay empty. But at the end, also, quite frequently over our history, I've had church members who have been in need of housing. You know, I probably can, at any given time, probably pull about two or three at any time, because people go through different changes in life, and they're trying to bounce back. And it's always been in our heart, ever since we started ministry, it was amazing to me how that often happened in our congregation, and so my thing is, if I see it constantly, then it's probably something that I probably want to be able to do something about, and so I feel like that, that's another opportunity there also.
And would you, if that situation were to arise, would you envision that also being a one-year lease arrangement?
Yes, yes. Because I feel like, if I can finish, I feel like people need an opportunity to bounce back. A lot of times, you think you can bounce back in 30 days, but I think you need an opportunity and a plan to bounce back, which we have what we call a benevolent ministry in our church, where we help families and help individuals financially and things of that nature, but along with that, we provide counseling and things of that nature, and nothing gets resolved in our history in 30 days, 60 days, but if we're saying, hey, look, we can help you with a place to stay for one year, but you got to work this plan also, then, then that's why church members, now, I'm not doing that for the veterans, because they have their own support system through the VA and things of that nature, but that was to answer your question about church members.
And when you say church members, would you limit it to folks attending that local church or your entire ministry?
I think it would be, to answer that question, I think it would be to our entire ministry. We consider ourselves as one church, even though we're in different locations, and quite frankly, the people in Conshohocken paid for this church and brought it to Pottstown, so, so I would say, I would say we're one church in multiple locations, and so it would be available to them also.
And what's, you might have mentioned at the beginning, if you did, I apologize, but what's your, do you have a similar type setup in the Conshohocken area?
No, as far as this, this part of ministry, no. This is something that we've always desired to do, but I, the... This is something that we've always desired to do, but the facility we have in Conshohocken is, it's a large facility, it's over 26,000 square feet. However, it doesn't have multiple buildings like this, that we can do this type of...
And is that just a worship center, or do you have housing there as well?
No, that's what I'm saying, we do, we do not have housing there.
Okay.
We have other things that we talked about earlier. We have a lot of things for children, summer camps, gymnasium, fun zone, we do a lot of different things, dance school, music school. So we have a lot of things that are available down there, but that facility, it's in a shopping center, with the largest tenant in the shopping center, but it's in a shopping center. That facility obviously didn't allow us to be able to extend to this avenue of ministry like we desired to do, even though we had the need to do it there, we just didn't have the facility to do it.
And you said that, that it would not be a voucher program?
No, it would not be a voucher program. We had talked about that in one of our meetings.
And I assume by that, I mean, the VA can be section eight?
Section eight. We weren't looking to do section eight anyway. However, when it came up in one of our meetings, how do you know that, I think in that fact, I read it in the newspaper. They all say that it's not going to be section eight upfront, but once you give them approval, how do we know they're not going to do it? Well, so I, I challenged my team to do the research, because we never desired to do it anyway, and when we did the research, section eight is not allowed in a quote unquote boarding home anyway.
That's going to be my next question.
Yeah, so, so therefore, that, and we did that research so we can put people at ease, that we don't plan on going that way once we get approval, and I guess some other people have done it, but that's not our desire. We can't do it.
And I, I guess, I mean, you know, because you were scheduled to go before the zoning hearing board previously, that there was significant opposition in the neighborhood. So, you know, I'm going to reach out to some of the, the folks and just see if, now that you've been able to explain in more detail what it is you envision, whether that mollifies them or not.
Yeah, and I sincerely believe that last night's meeting was success. Now, again, you never, you're never going to solve everyone's issues. Out of all the people there, there's probably one person that probably will always have an issue with it, and you probably know who I'm talking about. So, and that's fine. And that's fine, I mean, I understand everybody's not going to agree on anything, but what I wanted him to see is, the question he asked was good, and his concerns are my same concerns. And so therefore, we put things into place to try to alleviate those concerns and address those concerns, because I have the exact same concerns he has. His might have been a little bit more detailed than mine, but, because he was questioning me on parking, but, but we're good on parking.
And as I understand your request, you're really not looking to change the essential nature, just, you want to increase the allowable number of tenants involved.
Yes.
If that were not approved, does that impact your plans?
Which part? The allowable number, if they went, came to us and said, well, you can only have the six?
Yes.
No, it doesn't affect our plans, I mean, you know, it doesn't impact the plans.
Okay.
I mean, at the end of the day, I think...
I mean, you're not looking at this, if you, if you don't get the variance and you can't increase the number of tenants you can have, it's not economically viable, so you're walking away.
Oh, no, we're vested in, and that's what we told the people last night, that, that was the one, number one reason we didn't have a meeting upfront. One, we didn't own the property yet. So our biggest thing was how many times deals fall through, let's let the deal get completed, then we'll own the property. And then we had to get, obviously occupancy to have a meeting inside the facility, and so that took a couple of days to do that. But no, we're vested in, we're here, we're telling them that church is going to be there regardless. Now, we desire, we believe it can help some people, we have a good vision for it, and we're going to make sure the community is taken care of. But we're not going anywhere.
And maybe, maybe you don't know the answer to this, but from the VA's perspective, you said, obviously, of course, requirement number one is be a veteran.
Yes.
Do you know, are there additional requirements like, you know, a percentage of disability or, or anything like that, or is it just open to any veteran?
I, I don't know the complete answer to that. We had the, the VA come out and take a look at our facilities, which they loved and they approved and that, that type of nature. We can't, we already said we would not handle handicap, because we're not equipped to handle that.
Okay.
And we're thankful for the fact that we have a choice. And so therefore, when we, when we see the other issues, because sometimes there are other issues, when we show there's other issues, we don't have to accept that. And so therefore, we have full control. There's not, it's not a force-feeding type of program where you have to take anybody and everybody, because again, at the end of the day, we're primary here to be a church. The housing is a ministry, part of the church. And so therefore, if the church is my main focus, anything else that will hinder that, then that's, that's a negative for me. And so therefore, my right to choose, our right to choose concerning who lives there is a big deal for us. And then also protecting that from the standpoint of loitering, from the standpoint of having problem people, from the standpoint of protecting the children in the neighborhood, because those same children are going to come to our church, every time they see what's in there, they're going to come, I guarantee you. When they come to our summer camp, when they come to our after-school program, same kids that go to the school a couple of blocks away, we have vested interest in all of that. And so therefore, we don't, we're not going to have any issues.
And, and the staff that you say, i- is that a, you will have certain staff residing there definitely, or only if there's space available and you want to put them in there?
We, we hadn't decided it yet, we, we came up in a meeting, and we were definitely open to it. I, I've already had one staff person that says, hey, I'm willing to go, probably move to pots down, you know what I mean? But we hadn't...
It's a great place.
Yes, it's a great place. She was fine with it. Probably have two staff that would want to do it. So we're looking at that, and I'm not against it at all. I mean, I guess, our track record has, don't put the cart before the horse, you know what I mean? So it's like I can't start promising housing to my staff and I haven't even gotten approval. Even though I'm sure I can have a staff person live there, just like the, the priests live there, without any type of approval, just on this larger scale.
And the, the staff that you say will be there regularly from nine to whatever, nine to three, nine to five, whatever you said, that, that's...
That's my office staff.
Regular office staff, administrator, secretary, that type of thing?
Yeah, but they, they can definitely field and handle issues.
Okay.
And then obviously, any type of the issues with the property, they'll, they'll convey that to the property manager.
And the property manager, is that somebody you envision also being a resident, or just somebody who's local and available?
They're, they're local and available, they have an office on site. We have already office designated, but the plan is hopefully this gets approved. So office on site, and then they're local and regular.
And, and is that, is that going to be a, a third party that you contract with, or will that be a staff member designated as the property manager?
That's a property manager who is a member of our church, who's experienced in that field. So it kind of worked great for us. She's not, they, they, they are not completely on our staff as far as, they're obviously getting paid, so I guess they are on our staff. Let me look at that again.
It's a third party.
Yes, sir.
It's a third party.
But, but with a relationship to the church.
Yes, they're members of the church.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there additional services that you're offering veterans above and beyond housing?
Outside of spiritual, no. We, we let the VA handle that. Again, that goes to my previous comment of not trying to be a jack-of-all-trades, just trying to do what we can do well, and do that, and then allow the VA to handle all the services that they provide. But obviously, this is, we have our spiritual component, if they want to come to church, I'm, I'm there for them, and I can, we can provide that type of stuff, but no.
I'm a little confused that you said the Veterans Administration saw the housing and they approved it, but you don't know how the VA would pay for rent?
I, me personally, I can't answer that question. My property manager has been more in-depth, and she's the one, I didn't go on the tour with them. Obviously, they took a tour just to see, before we make an application, is this the type of place that we can do this with, on your standards? And then obviously, we have to get the boroughs approval after that. And so it's a, yeah, this is type, these rooms are our size, their, their, their standard's a little bit lower, I think their room size has to be a maximum of 120 square feet. So it passed their checklist, that type of scenario. But again, I can't answer that, but I'm not saying I can't get you that answer, I have your name, so if that's the answer that you want, I can, and he asked the same question, I don't have a problem getting that answer from the property manager, because I'm sure she can answer that question.
I just have one more thing I'd like to bring up regarding just some general knowledge of veterans populations. Again, not a stereotype, but often with the post-traumatic stress disorder and other psychological effects of war comes smoking. So would you be saying non-smokers cannot live there, or would you be providing some type of outdoor provision if there are people that do smoke?
We talked briefly about that, the, and we have to continue to discuss it. Number one, the property lends itself to, I guess, I think the convent has about three, if you want to call it, private outdoor areas. It has a deck, it has a nice front porch, and then it has a, the first, a walkout basement that has a patio in the back. So with it being a no-smoking facility, those would be the areas to smoke. Now, now then you got the issue of, okay, does the neighbor feel like that's the person loitering? And so we kind of discussed it briefly with, both of those properties have both of those types of setups. So we just have to decide, okay, you know, at the end of the day, I don't have a problem with not being non-smoking, since it's a church, any church next door anyway. And that kind of impacts that also, so...
I'm, I'm just throwing it out there because, you know, the post-traumatic stress and these other things often carry the...
Intangibles.
So the veterans can be members of your church, but not necessarily would be?
They can if they want to, oh absolutely.
But they may...
Yeah, they may decide to go somewhere else, they may decide not to go to church at all.
Okay, so they might not be part of your congregation.
Yeah, they may not be.
You said you, you're satisfied, you do have parking, what's the parking arrangement?
We have two things, we have a 110-car parking lot behind the church. And then the church takes up, you know, the first quarter of that whole block on one side. And so basically, when we talked with the neighbors last night, obviously, they would be allowed to park on our side of the street if they desire, you know, but at the same time, we can reserve some spots for them in the parking lot. Our, our church big days are on the weekends anyway, and so the parking's not an issue, you know. My friend that came to the meeting, he has a little bit more detailed parking demands, but, but I just told him, basically, I think there's 21 total people, there's 79 empty spaces, I don't think anybody's going to throw a party that big to fill all those spaces at one time, so. Yeah, but we, we can reserve, we don't have a problem with that.
Any other questions? Any recommendations coming from our Vice President, Gary?
I think I'd just like to, to wait and discuss it at the, at the council meeting. I just want to confer with some of the folks in the neighborhood and see how many calls I get on it, judge what, what the, the neighbor's opinion is on this.
Okay, and just, just so you know, this is the committee of the whole meeting. Council listens, takes things, talks about items. We actually vote on things on our Monday night meeting, which is Monday, February 9th. So you're welcome to come back to that, and again, council may withdraw opposition or may not, so can't, can't really tell for sure right now, but you're welcome to come back Monday night and see what happens.
Thank you.
Did you want to print a copy of what we gave to the neighbors?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the Fire Service Ordinance Amendments. Mr. Glaner?
Yeah, I'll take that, Mr. Trony. In contemplation of the consolidation efforts of the fire companies, I would ask council's permission to begin reviewing our fire department ordinances to determine what, if any, changes need to be made to be continued with the new consolidation. If you're amenable to that, I would ask that a motion be placed Monday night so I can begin the review, preparation, and prepare those for enactment when the time comes.
Okay, we will have that listed for Monday evening to move forward with that. Number seven, Civil Service Rules Amendments.
Trony, the police chief has provided Englishman information that the Civil Service Commission had met. As you recall, council authorized them to move forward with the advertising and the testing for their civil service eligibility list, and I believe there were two specific items, chief, that commission desired to have changed before it's advertised.
That is correct.
Could you enumerate on those two?
Yeah, the first one is just a, it's just a numbers thing, it's, it lists that we can, we can take more people to the, which creates a bigger pool for us, and I believe I, I forwarded amendments in your package for everybody, I believe, because they don't have it. And the other thing is civil service rules and regulations. We, we follow the Pennsylvania guidelines for physical agility, and basically what it does is just redefines it, it's taken away the bench press mark, because we do, that's a repetitive motion, and we already test for that for push-ups, and it puts in vertical jump. So those, those were proposed to the Civil Service Board, they, they, they approved to go forward with that, and that's what brings us here today.
Okay, we'll have it listed for Monday.
If there's a requirement, you approve any changes to the rules and regulations, so it's appropriate to take action.
Okay, number eight, amendments to the de resolution for housing of animals.
Yeah, I'll take that. I guess at the last meeting, Councilor Miller provided recommendations from the animal committee concerning the change in fee structure with respect to kennels and the housing of pets at our facility. So based on that information, I put together a proposed resolution that outlines the committee's recommendations. It's ready for council to approve Monday night if you desire to do that. And I believe it's consistent with what the committee wanted, is that correct?
Anything you want to highlight on it?
Yeah, I want to add, because I think there was a little confusion when we talked about it last month, that it's the $30 a day kennel fee, the 40 additional, the 40 additional dollars if you pick up the animal between the hours of 5:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m. So it would be $70 if you picked up your animal after 5:00 p.m. on that day. And then the $30 continues to accrue each day. Each day you want to pick up your animal after 5:00 p.m., there would be that additional $40 charge.
But if the animal was there that day and is picked up before 11:00?
Before 11:00.
Following day is, is this 30?
It's the one-day charge, yep.
Any questions on that? Okay, that will be listed. Number nine is the Fair Educational Funding Resolution. This is what we discussed last Thursday with, and this is going in concert with the school board. We will also be sending a letter to our state reps and also state senator with this resolution. To those who were there, who weren't there that evening, any questions? Okay, will be listed. Number 11 is taken off. Number 12, Lenape Native American Memorial.
You skipped 10.
Oops, I'm sorry, just back up to number 10. Resolution for destruction of records, I destroyed it already on my paper.
This is a annual or semi-annual housekeeping item. The various departments within the borough, as they accumulate records, were permitted to pass a resolution to permit certain records of a certain age to be destructed, or be destroyed, and in this case, I guess there's a number of records dating back a number of years from both the borough administration, licensed inspection, parks and rec, tax and finance, I think they're all listed. Again, all of the time periods have been satisfied that we're required to retain those records, and for Monday night, we'd ask that you pass the resolution that officially authorizes those records to be destroyed. I think you should be familiar with this, and we do it pretty much once a year, and we're ready to create more space.
I, I do have two questions. Are we working towards the goal of scanning current records that are on electronic media so that we, in the future, we really don't have to destroy paper records?
Diligently.
Okay. And then what are MIPP reports?
Keith? MIPP reports?
I think that's sewer. Yeah, that's Brent.
Municipal industrial pre-treatment.
There you go. Municipal industrial pre-treatment.
Yeah, and it has to do with the industrial plants and how much they let out.
Sorry, Keith. I'm not going to let Keith listen to that one. Mostly everything goes where the codes, so... Any other questions? Okay, now we're on to number 12. This is for the Lenape Native American Memorial, I guess this is requesting a grant.
I believe we can speak to this.
Our Parks and Recreation Director, Michael Lenhart, has been working with the Regional Parks and Recreation Ordinator, Justin Keller, on looking at the current Lenale Lenape monument at Industrial Highway and Franklin Street, and they've put together a proposal for the Health and Wellness Foundation to do a little more upkeep and add some interpretive signage and maybe some plantings, and this is a letter of interest right now, we're still going to work out the concept and schematic for that, but we are looking at making that a little more interpretive and a nice cultural center when the Sibley River Trail comes through Industrial Highway. So, that's the project. Do you have any questions? Let us know.
Do we need to vote on requesting that?
Voting on, uh, just supporting us proceeding with, uh, further with the concept.
Okay.
Yeah. We will find out in the beginning of March if we would actually be able to put together a formal application, so we come before you again to go through that. So, it's ten thousand dollars.
And that, once it done, or yearly?
Uh, just- just once and done, and then, um, we've been working with different groups to do the maintenance, parks and rec, you know, maintain the, uh, the plantings, everything that are better located there now, so that will be included in what the department takes care of annually.
Good. Uh, once again, Mr. Williams, I thank you for bringing that back to life again, and shame on us for letting it get in such disarray.
No shame at all. It's only a few years, and it's about twelve thousand, so, uh, you're okay.
At least it's been found before it was totally lost. Might as well stay up and do number thirteen?
Yeah, yeah, I understand. Okay. Well, with our annual, uh, request to the county for community development block grant funding, um, we had, um, considered strongly looking at the Rickett Center roof. It's been a problem for years. We've been putting Band-Aids on it concerning the maintenance. Um, so, together, Public Works, Parks and Recreation Administration, we're meeting with, um, the Olivet Boys and Girls Club to walk through and really take a, um, good comprehensive look at the roof for a replacement of the roof. And we're intending to apply for two hundred thousand dollars, um, from the county for those improvements. Uh, so, we're working on drafting that scope, but that's gonna be due in April. So, we're looking for approval to move forward with that grant application for two thousand and fifteen.
So, council's aware in the long-term lease agreement with Olivet Boys and Girls Club, um, we are, like, by two thousand and sixteen, we are obligated to have the roof repaired.
When we do that, whatever we can do to get the mechanicals off the roof, I think that'll solve ninety percent of the problems, though. Any problems having that listed? Okay, we will have that listed. Pedida Appointment. Uh, this is an update, I guess?
I'm sorry, the Pedida Appointment, um, if you recall, uh, last month, council made an appointment, um, upon a recommendation. Unfortunately, the recommendation was for a member whose term had not yet expired.
So, the- the person we are appointing is?
Shilla?
Burke Myers.
Burke Myers.
Any information you can forward to Ginny so we can have that, we can look at it?
She has, Burke was, um, put on the board about two months ago, knowing that Burke and Jeff were both very short-term. So, both of them had agreed that, yes, they know it was just a very short term, but that they would renew then for the five years.
Okay, so she's currently, okay.
Yes. I just forgot which one was first.
Okay, Planning Commission Appointment, Councilor Wean.
Uh, the only person of interest was Mary Beasley. He's a constituent in my ward, and he's been waiting for this opportunity.
Yeah, he's been coming to the meetings, uh, for several years, so that's a good choice, so... I agree with that appointment, so we will be voting on that on, uh, Monday evening. Number sixteen is a letter to the Pottstown Borough Authority. Uh, this is, I guess, thanking them for their, uh, contribution toward- towards the Borough Garage. So, we will have that listed, uh, of, uh, this letter thanking them. Number seventeen's zoning Ten Quinter Street, Sanoco Paperboard Group. This is your award, Cal.
Yeah, this- this is a request by the property owner at Ten Quinter Street to, uh, seek a variance from the zoning ordinance to replace the facade with something other than brick. I think you're aware, our ordinance requires a brick facade, and in this case, uh, there was information provided in the application as to why that can't work and what they propose to do. So, it's council's calls whether they wanna take a position or just let the zoning hearing board decide on the merits.
So, we'll just let them, uh, carry through. Eighteen, Sly Fox Road Running Race for May thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. I guess this is what's done last year, and it's, uh, coming before us again.
That's correct, Mr. Tren. Uh, if you recall, last year, Mr. Ewald from Tiberian Endurance Sports, a professional promoter of sporting events, um, requested of the borough permission to conduct a road race, the Sly Fox Road Race, on various roadways in the borough and West Pots Grove. He is again asking for the same road race again this year, uh, to occur on May the thirtieth, from Sly Fox Brewery out of the Circle of Progress into West Pots Grove, and then back to the brewery. I believe he's been in touch with the police chief already, uh, and he has been in touch, they have been in touch with West Pots Grove Township to get the required- required approvals there. So, he's asking for your permission again, um, to conduct the event on our streets. And they will provide all the support. They did a very good job last year.
Any questions? All right, that will be listed. Number nineteen is Stop the Drugs, Stop the Violence Crusade. Uh, they are asking for a waiver of fees, and the total fees is a hundred and ten dollars?
Hundred and ten dollars, correct. And it would be for the rental of Riverfront Park and for the...
Electric.
Electricity. Uh, there would be no staff support, and I- I recognize that we had, uh, altered the fee schedule so that, uh, we didn't have so many requests for fee waivers. However, in this case, um, given the nature of the event that they're hosting, staff's recommendation that you approve the waiver.
This is a single exception.
That's correct.
Any other comments?
Well, we could waive the seventy-five-dollar rental, and each council member could chip in five bucks, and that would be the thirty-five dollars for the electric. Just throwing that out there.
Cisco responsibility.
Any other thoughts? No, I like that one. Well, we'll see how the motion plays out Monday evening. Uh, number twenty, Classics Car Club, uh, twenty-fifteenth show schedule. That is listed, and I guess, uh... Any questions on this? It will be listed. Twenty-one, Carousel Flavor Road Closure and Beer Garden, and this is for September thirteenth.
September the thirteenth of this year for the Carousel Flavor, and it is in con- it will be in conjunction with the Carousel this year or in conjunction with the bicentennial event. It will be the opening of the Time Capsule at High and Hanover Streets. It will occur the same day during the Carousel event.
Any questions on that? Okay, that will be listed for approval. Harp, uh, items, nine thirty-five High Street, one sixty-three North Charlotte Street, ten thirty-three East High Street, and nine ninety High Street. Any questions on any of these items? Okay, seeing none, they will be listed for Monday evening. Okay, we're up to Citizens Comment.
Doug Rydenbach. Take your pick, sir.
Please be reminded as Monday evening, too, a three-minute time limit. How many we have? We only have four, so I will be a little lenient.
Well, I'll try to be as brief as I can be. Mayor, President, Governor, Councilor, my name's Doug Rydenbach.
If you could sit, Doug, and then talk into that Russ hearing impaired, thank you.
I'll do that. I'm here tonight representing the Phillies Fire Company. And I guess I'm here tonight hoping that, uh, some time, whether it be tonight or in the not-too-distant future, the questions that we think are legitimate questions can be answered. As the council knows, there's been an ongoing process for two years. The four fire companies were required by the borough to engage in discussions concerning a possible consolidation. The borough employed a consultant, um, to facilitate that process. I got involved later in the process, maybe the last six or seven months, but I've attended the meetings. And questions that consistently arose among the members of the Phillies Fire Company and also the other fire companies is, why is it now a necessity that this process take place? The borough consultant issued a position paper which says plainly that the system that's presently in place is working. So, our first question is, if the system that's presently in place is working, why are we trying to fix something that ain't broke? So, in response to that question, the borough's consultant has offered four points in- in a position paper as to why this consolidation should be done. First, he said, "It will assist in the recruitment of new volunteers." Now, the recruitment of volunteers is a nationwide issue, uh, particularly for firefighters. Those folks sitting in the back from the Phillies, those certified firefighters, have to go through a hundred and eighty-eight hours of training on their own time, over and above their regular employment, to be certified as a volunteer firefighter. It's a big commitment. We see less of it these days than we used to, but thankfully for Pottstown, we have quite a significant number of volunteers who have made that commitment and continue to do so. Speaking for the Phillies, and actually, I think it's true of all the fire companies, the effort to recruit new members has been ongoing and has been significant over the years. We asked the consultant how a consolidation would assist the companies in recruiting, and we did not get a specific answer. There was no methodology offered. There was no saying, uh, you know, in Bethlehem, they did this, and this is how they recruited more volunteers. We- we received no answers to that question, and so frankly, we found that to be an inadequate answer. We're trying to do it ourselves and making significant efforts at it. And our system, in the words of the facilitator, your consultant, is working. The second area in which he said it would, uh, the consolidation would benefit the borough is in the area of standardized training. Well, among our folks, we believe the chief, the borough chief, has the power today to say, "I want to institute standardized training." And this month, we're gonna have a standardized training session at Goodwill, and next month, we're gonna have a standardized training session at North End. And the following month, we're gonna have it at the Phillies. We don't understand how consolidation facilitates that. That can be done under the present system. Thirdly, um, I wanna make sure I say this right. He cited increased purchasing power, and fourthly, a reduction in redundant purchasing. So, that's, those are the money issues. Now, ladies and gentlemen, the borough budgets about a million dollars a year for the fire departments, two hundred and fifty thousand to each one. Of that budgeted amount, eighty percent represents the cost of the twelve paid drivers. Each of the four companies has three full-time drivers. Salary, benefits, insurances, everything that goes with it runs about sixty or sixty-five thousand dollars a man. It's eight hundred thousand dollars of the one million dollar budget. So, if there's gonna be savings, and let me say that none of the fire companies thinks there should be a reduction in the twelve paid drivers, that the consultant says there should not be a reduction in the twelve paid drivers, that they represent a minimum, an absolute minimum of what is required to continue to produce and provide the service that is presently provided in the borough. So, we're not talking about saving money by getting rid of paid drivers, apparently, so it's gotta come from the other two hundred thousand dollars in the fire budget. Redundancy in purchasing and increased purchasing power, uh, if you look at the items actually purchased with that money, equipment, renewable supplies, and, uh, supplies that have to be replaced periodically. We think if you saved seventy-five thousand dollars a year out of that two hundred thousand dollars, that's wildly optimistic. Wildly optimistic. It's the cost, by the way, of one police officer. We've asked to show us where the financial savings are gonna come, and no one has been able to say to us anything different from what I've just said to you. So, we have caused uproar of epic proportions in the fire companies. I- I've seen this process. I've been there. I've sat in the meetings. There has been an honest effort by the four companies to address this. But at the same time, we've asked questions that we think are legitimate questions for which specific answers are not provided, for a system that, in the words of your consultant, is working. So, speaking on behalf of the Phillies, I say to you that we're... Actually, flabbergasted would be the word. That we received a letter from the borough dated January fourteenth telling us that there's nothing further to discuss, that we must sign the agreement by March thirty-first, or else the Phillies will no longer be part of fire protection in Pottstown. Which I take to mean there will be no annual contribution to the Phillies, and you'll proceed with the other three companies. I- I don't understand how a volunteer organization can be treated, forgive me for saying it, but cavalierly, with a lack of respect for what, in the case of the Phillies, represents one hundred and forty-four years of volunteerism for the benefit of this borough. As a more practical matter, the Phillies have roughly fifty percent of your volunteer firefighters. So, I hope that you're prepared to answer questions from the residents when they ask you, "When we lose half our volunteer firefighters, how are we gonna fight fires?" Because you can't fight fires with the four full-time guys who are on duty at any one time. They get the apparatus there, but you need more than that to fight fires. To tell your volunteers that we no longer value you, we no longer want your services i- is- is something that, in the absence of specific answers to these questions, we- we don't understand.
Excuse me, Doug. You're at eight minutes. If you could wrap up.
Well, the consultant said that while this present system is currently working, he doesn't see it susta- I'm sorry, sustainable in the long term. And that may be right. Maybe the kind of volunteerism that these guys in the back have given to the borough for years will in the future be a thing of the past, but it's not a thing of the past in Pottstown today. If you have to replace your volunteers with a paid, unionized fire department, that one million you're paying this year will be four million next year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ted Penrod.
I just wanted to call everyone's attention to a posting that was in yesterday's Pottstown Mercury about a meeting, meetings being held on February twenty-fourth and March tenth here in Pottstown by the Montgomery County Department of Housing and Community Development. And it's a series of meetings where they're going to be talking about their five-year plan. And, uh, if I can read directly from the ad, um, they're, um, the meetings are serving as information gathering sessions on the need for homeless prevention, shelters and transitional housing, affordable housing development, housing and services for those with special needs, community services for low and moderate income, economic development, public facilities. And the most important part of this is, "It's an opportunity," and I quote, "for individuals and organizations to provide feedback to the county on the needs of low and moderate income residents and to learn about the programs and be involved in determining how the county will use approximately four million dollars in allocations from HUD to improve our community." And I know that staff and council will respond to this as appropriate, but I think that also it's important for our residents, on our property owners, um, our- our candidates for new council positions and others to be aware that there is an opportunity for them to have input and to have comment. The last time the five-year plan was done, which was in two thousand and ten, uh, the report noted that there had been no comments... there had been no comments received from the public, which, given the level of comment in Soundoff and on Facebook and on web postings everywhere, is just inconceivable to me that those comments from our public wouldn't actually make it to the people at the county who are responsible for this planning. So I just wanted to highlight and make a little bit of publicity for the fact that there will be those community opportunities to speak at two occasions coming up here in Pottstown. Thank you.
Those dates are again?
February 24th is the focus group.
At what time?
2:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Community College, and the public input will be at 6:00 on March 10th, and the meetings will also have other focus groups in Norristown, Colmar, Willow Grove, but Pottstown is one of the three main centers. And the previous report from 2010, it's really long, but the meat of it is about 123 pages of, boy, talk about an education on housing and HUD support in Montgomery County. I think for everybody who is confused or frustrated or stressed out by what they see as problems with the situation, even though it's five years old, I think that that report that's on the Monco website is just incredibly illuminating. Interestingly, you are not yet able to find the hearing information on the Montgomery County website. It's rather frustrating. The only notices apparently have so far been the newspaper postings. Not that the posting in the Mercury isn't a wonderful way to publicize this, but it's not yet available on the website, so that's why I thought it was important to bring it up.
Anyone who does social media, if they could put that on their Facebook, and if somebody wants to call in to Soundoff and let them know that those meetings are heard, I think sometimes those are the best avenues for people to come out and see.
Zenetta Ford.
She was the attorney for Higher Ground, so I think she just signed it.
And Mary Beth Bacallo.
It feels weird to sit, I'm used to standing. Mary Beth Bacallo, 1201 Cherry Street. I'm here tonight to provide some questions that I still have outstanding about the Higher Ground International proposal to move church and housing facilities into the property at 1128 South Street. I would like, if it can be made available to me, Mr. Geary, a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that they gave tonight, if they're going to give that to you or anybody on council, as well as a copy of the papers that you were given from last night's community meeting. While I under, is that a copy?
That's what they gave me.
That I can keep? Okay, thank you. I'll scan it and make sure my neighbors get it, too.
Thank you.
I understand what the legal requirements are for notification of these community meetings, however, it is disappointing to me that a faith-based organization would have only met the legal requirements to let community members around whose neighborhood they'd like to engage. They didn't feel compelled to come to my home, which is less than a block away. As a school board director, I am concerned about the type of people who would be allowed to move into that facility despite assurances this evening about outreach to veterans. I don't understand why veterans have been targeted. I don't think that anyone asked that. I would like to have some more information as to why they targeted veterans. I didn't hear any information about any staff being prepared to offer any kind of medical assistance if the need arose, any staff that was going to live on site being certified in any kind of, whether it be property management, to offset a property manager who isn't going to be on site because they did state they would not be on site, or any kind of definitive information about the staff and why they would be there. If they're there as church staff, I'm not quite sure why they would need to live there. I would like more information about that. If there were empty rooms, it seemed to me that there would be empty rooms and they would have to take that. That means they would be operating at a loss, and I fail really to believe that they would, any organization would continue to be able to operate at a loss, especially a church organization. I have submitted a letter to Reverend Paul Brant, who was the property owner up until the closure of this transaction. There was some financial assistance made by the Archdiocese of Philadelphia through Paul Brant during this transaction, and as an active member of the Roman Catholic Church and the Archdiocese, I would like to know how that decision was made. It flies in the face of the social justice movement that is very prevalent in today's church through my newly-elected pope, so I will be questioning with him, and I've requested an in-person meeting with Father Brant. I'll let you know if I have it. I'm interested to ask you to think about why there isn't housing in Conshohocken, even if it's not on site. That's where they're located today. I can't believe that services like this aren't needed in Conshohocken, which is a stone's throw and only several miles away from the borough of Norristown, which also has a need for community services, just like Pottstown already has adequately. I would urge you to continue to oppose this proposal and to encourage our county commissioners and agencies to expand areas in Montgomery County where housing that is not home ownership-based be offered, be promoted. Perhaps we could offer our wide and deep expertise in providing community services in a consultative manner to any other township that would like to engage in these activities. This does not attract middle-class families or middle-class individuals with disposable income, and I will remind you that the ULI Institute encouraged and really urged borough council and the citizenry of Pottstown over 10 years ago now to make that a priority. I would remind you that another half-block away are over 300 elementary-age students. While I am certainly in support of faith-based endeavors all throughout our municipality and the state, we need to put their safety first. I don't know that I am convinced that they would be safe with more open housing and questionable certification procedures in place for those tenants. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Beth, you know when the zoning hearing is?
Yes.
Okay, Councilor General Discussion. I'll start over here with Mr. Proxel. Nothing this evening.
Oh, you know I always have something. First, I want to express my disappointment in all the fanfare publicity about the upcoming bicentennial events at the fifth annual pet fair coming up on September 19th was not mentioned. It was overlooked, and last year, we had vendors from three states, and we estimate 3,000 visitors, so this is a fantastic event that grows bigger and bigger every year, and I'm just disappointed it wasn't included, so I'm going to put it out there.
You can let your slidey let her know.
The pet fair, yes. Okay, and I'm also excited about the upcoming first pet adoption day on Saturday, May 16th at Smith Family Plaza, so come check us out while you're here. You might just find your perfect pet. And then lastly, but not leastly, I challenge those charged with economic development, revitalization efforts, marketing, and promoting our town to absorb these numbers. According to the American Pet Products Association, the total U.S. pet industry expenditures for 2014 is estimated at $58.5 billion. $22.6 billion in food, $13.7 in medicine supplies, $15.25 in vet care, $2.9 in live animal purchases, and $4.7 in grooming and boarding, most of which is non-existent in the borough, and what is available, we're only getting a mere fraction of a percent.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Madam Mayor? Councilor Kirkland?
Yeah, I just wanted to say to the friends and family of Newsdale Marable, it was a sad day for me to hear of his home going. It was an honor and a privilege to have known him. I was introduced to him by the former mayor.
Ed Jones? Honey.
Honey. She came to me one day and said, you know, "There's someone I think you should meet," and she introduced me to Newsdale. I just appreciate the advice and the guidance he's given me, you know, throughout the years. He's a really sweet, sweet person, really nice person, cares about everyone. He included everyone, and he definitely will be missed, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you for those comments. Councilor Gary?
Nothing.
Councilor Nguyen?
Nothing.
Okay, I guess we have a couple items of executive session.
Well, we have one, I know. It's, you know, the borough is a party in the zoning appeal for higher ground as such. That's considered litigation. Based upon the information we received, I would recommend we go into executive session for purposes of discussing litigation. No action to follow.
We are adjourned.